Good morning, everybody. Officially called to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors on November 28, 2023 here in Coachella. And please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, yeah. And roll call, please.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Ag-- sorry, Director Bianco will be arriving late shortly. Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. Are we aware of any additions, deletions, or adjustments to today's agenda?
No, sir. I don't see anybody with their hand up or running to the podium.
Nor am I. Let's move on. Public comment. Is there anybody from the public wishing to make comment at this time? I don't see a lot of public in the room, so maybe online? Do we have anybody online that might?
Not yet.
Okay. So I'd say hearing none, we'll move on. Consent calendar. I have items 5A through D.
I'd move approval. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, nothing about a plane. A consent calendar is not ever seen.
You got that right.
Morning, Anthony. Make a note that Director Bianco has joined us. Ordinance is for adoption. This is one that has come back to us, adopting ordinance 1437.3 to update the canal irrigation and drainage system rules and regs. David Wilson, floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a comment before Mr. Wilson gets started. I, you know, I was the most vocal, I think, on this ordinance, and I just wanted to let you know. I read through the ordinance several times. It looks fantastic. I think that staff did a great job at addressing my concerns over that. So if David wants to do a presentation light, that's fine with me. You know, I have to go through every detail on my behalf. Might be others, might be others that want that.
I'm glad that you said that because I looked at it and it looked good to me, and I'm like, well, we'll see what Peter says. Because I wasn't so sure.
Right.
Good.
Well, I don't have to do anything.
Yeah, I don't think you do. Thank you, David. Thanks, thank you for that.
I know that last time we had a question on how to package this at some point so that the regulations were universal across the service area.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm not sure. I'm assuming this doesn't get us there because I think we want it to be specific to the Oasis area. And is that, is that what we have here?
No, actually, the language specifically allows for it to be across the board.
Okay, perfect. And that answers my question.
Is there a motion to approve?
I would move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
I'm sorry that's so important.
Oh, roll call. Yeah, sure. Thanks, John. You're earning your keep today, all right.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Passed 5-0.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, appreciate that.
And I had, I had talked with Kerry earlier this morning that I, you know, I was really thankful that, that addressed, you know, all the, all the issues, I think, that both Costolo and I had brought up. I think others were concerned as well. And it was very, very thoughtful and appreciate the action.
Great. On to action calendar. We have a review of committee assignments. And it's my understanding that we may have requested change. Maybe? Director Aguilar?
Yeah. Thank you, John. I asked that this come before the board. The concern I have is the, is with the, on the first page is with the Energy Commission that the board generously appointed me to a few months ago. Because of some issues I have with family caretaking, I've not been able to attend the last two meetings. And there's a third meeting coming up, which I'm probably not going to be able to attend as well. This is a really important commission. There's a lot of potential future impact to the district and its customers on what happens in the future. So I wanted to mention this. The other issue with this particular group is that they don't do Zoom. They require that you attend in person, which if they had agreed to do Zoom, I could probably be more flexible. But in its current form, I cannot continue to participate.
Has there been any discussion at that board regarding remote attendance? Are you aware of anything like that?
No.
That hasn't come up?
No.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a history there or not, why they don't do it. Okay. Well, are there any directors that would be interested in serving in that role? Kind of a big commitment.
I think I have a conflict for being in LAFCO. I don't know if you agree with that. But some of this stuff is before LAFCO, so.
So they've published on their website that the meetings are the second Thursday of the month, but they haven't really stuck to that. They tend to move it around without a lot of discussion. Staff is not able to receive any of the documents, not all of, they're not, they're not regulated or restricted by the Brown Act. So they're pretty much doing whatever they want to do.
What do you mean they're not regulated by the Brown?
It's not a Brown Act. It's a, it's a committee that's appointed, but there's no quorum from anybody. It's not a standing committee from IID. So they don't have to post in advance. They don't post in advance. They don't distribute to staff. They only distribute to the members. And, you know, it, it has been somewhat of a problem, although not a huge problem to overcome. We have, I have attended some of the meetings, and Rick Argon is primary staff support. So if, if a board member is not available to attend, we could probably find staff, either myself or Rick, to attend. There's a unique situation in that while a lot of the agency cities are able to appoint their members directly, only CVWD's member must be appointed, must be approved by the IID board. And so we don't necessarily have the ability to just send somebody over and have them start attending. At one point, and I'm pretty sure I checked this yesterday, the next meeting of the CIVC was going to be December 21st. Checking their board website this morning, it appears that their next meeting is December 7th from 4:00 to 6:00. So again, there may be some internal discussion amongst members, you know. My notice is December 6th. At 1:00. Yeah, well, see, there you go. There's, there's yet again, one of the problems.
You said they meet.
Once a month?
Once a month.
Yes. Well, you know, I, it's hard to say now because they don't, they.
But these are public meetings, right? I mean, a member of the public could walk in and.
Yes. If you know when and where.
No, I know. Well, I know that we.
Bouncing ball.
We made a point of, of wanting to be included.
Yes.
And so I think we need to represent.
And it doesn't, doesn't have to be a board member. It can be a staff member.
At one point, I think this board, yeah, no, I'm checking the website again, and on one of their, one of their sites, the live and recorded meetings, there's no upcoming meetings, no upcoming events. But when you go to the meeting documents, which of course are never posted, it says the next event will be 12:07, 23:00, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. There is no location. So I'm not sure when that will occur. But I don't doubt that they may have yet again changed it.
I mean, can we, can we delegate that to like Jim?
Yeah.
There are other, I would say, non-electeds on the committee. Off the top of my head, I know a lot of the at-large are not elected. Bill Patterson, former CFO, represents City of Coachella. We've got Juan Perez, who is representing the supervisor. We've got a couple of folks, the individual for Riverside County is.
Bill Patterson, others.
Right.
Blaine Carrion.
Blaine Carrion, at-large. Bettencourt, who was on a planning committee. John Ramon is an at-large for Cove. He used to be with College of the Desert. So there's quite a few that are not elected.
Well, I'll make a motion to appoint Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, sir. May I have another? What I might do is ask for Rick to be the alternate in case something comes up, and we'll propose that to IID and see if they can approve two of us at once. Get a twofer.
So amended.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, I guess there has to be a vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
Can we be aware of those meetings so a board member can show up?
As long, as we're start getting the packages, yes, we can absolutely do that.
And Section 4.07 of the bylaws says that they are subject to Brown Act.
Well, they're not. We've, we've asked that question, and we've been told that they are not. And that's why they don't post their stuff in advance. They don't make it available to the public.
Doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense. That's crazy. Well, and, you know, maybe once I'm on the committee, I can clarify that.
I mean, one, one thing we know is that they are, they have no power, right? I mean, it's an advisory.
Yes. And if IID doesn't like the way it's going, they'll just abolish it.
Right.
Which may happen shortly after.
But it also doesn't have any limitation on the CBWD commissioner being a board member. Correct. Board members are IID directors. Everything is just a committee.
Okay, well, good. I would appreciate that coverage from staff. And then we can get reports.
Absolutely.
And then we can put that into the monthly general manager's report.
Absolutely.
What happened there. Okay, good. Let's vote then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed 5-0. Yeah. Hard to just keep adding more things on the time commitment. I mean, that's, I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman.
Authorized purchase of these two IBM servers. Hi, Luis. This is just sort of to bridge us from where we are until we have something new.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. Yes, that is correct. Unfortunately, the service has reached end of life, and replacing the ERP system will probably take about five years. Plus, we will keep the servers running for another two, three years. They will have historical data, and it's obviously helpful to do that.
Okay. So you're talking, we're going to use these for eight years?
Yes.
Based on that?
At the very least, yes.
That's pretty good. They don't last more than 10 anyway.
No. And we were planning to buy additional support, but we were told that it, you pay them support, and it's not guaranteed that they will be able to provide parts or cybersecurity updates, which is the main concern as well.
Right.
And so it's just not worth the risk. I, you know, especially the fact that we're going to be able to use them for the next eight years.
Yeah, understood.
And they run all the critical applications for the business, including canal, HR, payroll, a whole bunch of other homegrown developed applications that we use for different purposes, water management and things like that.
Is there any, is this always a purchase, or is, are there leasing opportunities?
Yeah, we looked at leasing, and it was the same amount for five years, and you sell, and then you have to give them the servers back.
Yeah, better to keep them.
Yeah, and this way, it's eight years, 10 years. You know, there, there'll be, we will, we have, we will have no rush to move the critical data or the historical data out of them.
Yeah, more flexibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, understood. Fair enough.
I'll move approval.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed 5-0. And then we have this near map renewal. Oh, you're doing this one too?
Yes.
On the GIS imagery. Go ahead, Luis.
The item before you is to request authorization to renew the services or the service from near map. This is high-definition aerial imagery that we use in our GIS services. It is used throughout the district, but the different departments. We primarily use it for, to improve asset management, ID leaks or leak detection. It's used for infrastructure inspection, environmental monitoring, regulatory compliance, public outreach, emergency responses, land use planning, customer service. And it's one of the, it's the only one, the only service that is cloud service that is flexible in the way we use it compared to, compared to the traditional flight plan they used to have.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll, I'll move approval.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Luis. Red Communications, I know we had that one. I reviewed it again. Forget exactly what it said. Oh, that was the, the leak. Yeah. There were two? HOA, that's right. Oh, fair enough. Yeah, that, that was the one I was thinking of.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I don't know what we're doing about that. Anyways, those were posted on the, on the website. Then we have a strategic plan update. Robert Chang, good morning.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. I can make this real brief. I had a presentation, but, you know, unless you all need it. Just in summary, we have 14 projects that support his six different goal areas that I think with the help of the board, you know, the staff, you know, have been working on. So between these, you know, different project areas, there's anywhere between one to four projects in each one. I'm happy to report that everything's on track, you know. So the way that we kind of gauge these are, you know, in your packet, you'll see the greens are, you know, fully on, on schedule, both in terms of the quarterly goals as well as meeting the end-of-year goals. And then the yellows, which there's six, so the, the composition is like eight, are completely on schedule, and six may have suffered a little bit of delay, like in the quarterly schedule, but it's on track to finish. So this is on your page three, your third slide, are, will still be making the, the year-end schedule. So unless there's any questions about it, any specific projects, you know, happy to, you know, report that, you know, everything's, everything's good. Even though 14 projects seem a little bit lighter than, you know, the other previous years, I think our heaviest year was probably like 31 or 32 the first year. You know, we have plenty to keep us busy. I think the Chromium 6 issue that has just resurfaced, as well as, I think, you know, the operations group has been inundated with, you know, the repair work on Tropical Storm Hillary, as well as the Labor Day work. So anyways, that closes out my report and happy to entertain any questions. If there's none, I'll be happy to come back. Yes, sir.
So on page nine, two bullet points I had to question. One is on the, you met with the advisors to plan for $99 million debt, debt issuance for five-year CIP. And then secondly, you created a finance division to focus attention on grants. Can I just get more detail on that?
Sure. And I would turn to our finance director, who's the coordinator for that.
Thank you. Thanks, Director Aguilar. Yes, so, so much of this is relating to the, the overall need for looking at the future and coming up with a way to fund the infrastructure need on the, the CIP. And so we had initially talked during the budget season of the need at a minimum to fund this five-year CIP for issuing about $100 million a few years from now. And so there's been ongoing discussions with our municipal advisor, Darren Hodge, on the, the ins and outs of what that's going to look like in timing and what that does as potential rate impacts. And so getting into, getting more, essentially more information for this next budget season to refine that projection. The other piece, which comes into this, which will be a big theme in this next budget cycle, will be specific to, I guess, two main areas, domestic and stormwater. Domestic, there's a lot that's not on the CIP that there's the, since the need to do mainline replacements, we talked about Talavera and other areas. And there's no funding plan for that other than the option to issue more debt, which then requires rate increases. And so a lot of that presentation will be how much the board wants to do in terms of projects, and that'll translate to a debt plan that follows with that. And the stormwater, we've been talking about. So what, what can we afford with existing revenue sources and then other revenue options? And you'll get a comprehensive update on that in January. So all of the work relating to those pieces of analysis is what those, those bullet points are pretty much representing.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if, did you hire more staff to work on grants, or?
So.
It sounds like you created a new division.
So in, when I came on, we reorganized finance into three distinct areas. One of them distinctly is finance, so that includes budget and grants. And so I'd, I'd say there was a reorganization of existing staff, not new staff, with focus on grants, including support staff on the accounting side, and then relooking at our relationship with our, our consultants. I think our staff were taking more of a lead role in planning and coordinating the grants efforts and then trying to use our grants consultants just for the technical applications on some of these larger grants and focus their specialty on that.
Great, yeah, that's excellent. Thanks, Rick.
Hey, while, while you're up here, Rick, is, how will sites be incorporated? Will it be, will it be part of like new infrastructure or water supply? How will that be, fit into the budget thinking process?
So that, we're, we're working with Assistant General Manager Chang on, on getting updated forecasts. And then really the, the impact will be whether this will be tax funded or, or not, and then we'll, we'll, we'll go from there. So waiting more information on our part. Robert, I don't know. Yeah.
I was going to go through statewide projects.
So, yeah, thank you for the question. So the sites participants, I think there's like four or five of us who absolutely need it on the tax rolls to, you know, drive the project forward. I think we're one of them. So our attorneys have been working very diligently with EWR's attorneys and sites attorneys to make sure that, you know, this could be incorporated as a part of the project. So Steve Abis has been representing us ably, as he normally does on these issues. We expect, you know, some answer hopefully in 2024. I think there'll be a next ask, you know, the next big ask will probably be for funding after 2025. So, you know, it's expected that we're going to be coming to our home boards for these requests. And until we get that issue sorted out, you know, I can't really bring that issue up here, nor can, you know, our other partners. So, but I, I think it feels optimistic that we're able to put it on because I think we've been very clear that unless, you know, we're able to kind of get it incorporated into the DWR statement of charges, you know, this project is sort of going to suffer a slow death for us.
When does the benefits and obligations contract have to be signed with that?
Great question. So the preliminary benefits obligations prod, draft has been submitted to EPA, you know, as part of the WIFIA funding package. So I think the actual signature by the home boards probably won't take place until, you know, we come in front of, you know, this body for authorization. So they'll probably be in '24 sometime, I'm thinking towards the latter end.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Robert.
Yep, you're welcome. Oh, sorry. Was there any other questions on the strategic planning?
Nope.
Hearing none?
Okay, thank you.
Well done, Robert. Wow. All right. So we're on to board general comments. Director Nelson?
Just, I'll, I'll make a comment on what DWR is doing on the state water project. Is, it's very frustrating to see that, that storage in San Luis Reservoir has gone from about 90% down to 45% in the last 45 days, two, two months, maybe. There was, I guess, some outlet, outlet works that had to be made on Orville Dam. And so because of the lack of water coming down that system, there was more necessary, necessary water coming from the SAC River to get out the delta, and so the water couldn't be pumped. And so the DWRs really, they hadn't, none of that was in their projections as of, for the last two months. And then this last water ops meeting, they, they announced that, hey, we're, we're, we've missed, we've missed it by about 300,000 acre feet, but it's even more than that. So it's very frustrating to see that San Luis is, has dropped down to about 45% full now. It's a pretty big issue. Robert's fully aware of it and been working on it from his state water contractor's position and, but it's, it's been frustrating for, to watch that happen. Hopefully, hopefully, I heard on the radio today, though, that Scripps is saying December through February will be the El Nino Impact Month, so hopefully we'll get it.
It makes me think, are they trying to justify some of this by saying, well, we're going to need the space anyways for the heavy precipitation?
I don't know, John. They didn't mention that in their water ops call, but, but they did mention that they had to manage this for this X2, which is the interface of salinity versus freshwater. And it had to be, you know, the freshwater had to push it back out and, which is a little, in my mind, a little ridiculous because of the fact that of all the water that went out this past year, that, that the delta's pretty well flushed out. So I don't get all the regulations in, in that. Don't understand it. I don't think I ever will.
Yeah, okay. Well, appreciate bringing that up. I was not aware of that.
Yeah.
Anthony?
No comments.
No comments.
I think today there's a reception. Is that today?
Yes, sir.
A Met reception?
Yes, sir.
I think I'm planning to.
Peter, are you going to be there? Yeah, I'll be there.
That kind of surprised me. So that's like CBWD, Met, and DWA? Is that what I saw?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know that's what it was when they, when I first heard about it, then I saw yesterday something that said that. I'll probably be there. Sort of part of Aqua, I guess.
Yeah, at the, yeah, it is at 4:30 to 5:30 at the Renaissance Esmeralda Resort and Spa in the Barcelona Room. It was something that we did the last Aqua Conference. And this time, you know, they've asked us to help contribute and therefore very open in far as who can attend, but we'd like to keep it to key staff and board members.
Imagine we'll be talking about replenishment.
I imagine we'll be talking about Colorado River issues and how California needs to be all together in.
Well, there's that. I was just thinking with DWA there, they're, they won't be talking about that.
Probably not.
Hey, John, since we're still under board comments, and I know you passed me, but I have, I have a question.
Go for it.
If you'd permit. So the Whitewater is running again, and the Hurricane Hillary seriously damaged the bridge that goes across Whitewater. Will that present any practical impairments of our ability to keep running water for recharge?
I could ask Dan to come up and give you more specifics, but generally speaking, we're working with the county who has already awarded, or has got a contract ready to go. I don't know that they've actually awarded it, to demolish that. We have tried to target when Met will be taking the aqueduct down for maintenance, which is, I guess, late January, early February. Is that, oh, got it all wrong.
So you're not.
Was I close even?
You're not talking about I-10.
Not I-10.
No.
So right next to I-10, there's a bridge that goes across Whitewater.
That's where people go, go to go swim.
Go to go swimming.
They put that security guard up there.
And that's where our security officer parks right on that bridge. And right now, it's, it's, it's like this.
Oh, I didn't know that.
It's all cattywack.
Good morning. Yeah. Good morning. So with the thousand-year flood going through, there was already structural damage that the county knew about in 2016, and they were looking at trying to find a solution. The bridge obviously got undermined during the first event, Hurricane Hillary. They have engaged a contractor. We've been coordinating very closely with them and Metropolitan. And, you know, Met wants to go up, they want to go down. I've been just trying to stay the same. So we're at 410 CFS right now. When we were at 700, the water was going around one of the piles, and the bridge definitely was moving. So we backed down to 410. I have a meeting potentially tomorrow with both the entities. So I thought Met and the county should get together to see if staying at 410 for the rest of the year is great. Their demolition plan was submitted to me on Monday. I shared that with Met because I think it's a collaborative process. And we're just waiting on a sequencing plan. But there are five piers on the east side of the bridge that they can demolish without the water being shut down. They can't lift the sections off with cranes. They have to put, place them down and demo them in place. So that's not even going to start until December 11th, and they've got a lot of work to do on the east side. So I know the west side is going to be sometime in January. But Met has also said that they might want to be at 150 CFS for January and February. And their aqueduct shutdown, which I found, it's always, it's been February for 15 years. I found out last week it's going to be March this year. So just trying to communicate with both entities, if they need a week to shut down, to drop that one span and demolish it, we're going to have to thread the needle with Met. And I'm like, well, if you want 150 CFS in January for four weeks, why don't you go 300 for two and then shut down for two to allow the county the opportunity? So it's, it's just a continuous collaboration effort. But at this time, I'm just trying to stay at 410, which is, you know, 800 acre feet a day. We just went past 205,000 for the year, which I think is great. So, you know, if we stay at 800 for the next, you know, 30 days, we'll be at 230,000 or something.
So accounting wise, Desert and Coachella have all their 100% allocation in for 2023?
I don't know that we've got the October numbers yet, but that's probably my understanding. I don't know if Robert has any additional.
Okay.
Yeah, Michael U sends it out, and it's about 45 days behind. So we've put a lot of water in the ground since then. So I'm not sure exactly where we're at. But I think primarily Metropolitan's the one struggling to put more water in the ground.
Okay.
They're trying to get some advanced delivery in there?
They're, yeah, they're trying to, they don't have any, any place for their water at this point in time.
But on top of what we were already going to put in for ourselves.
I say let the bridge fall down, and the water's going to, going to go up in the air, and everyone on the freeway will think it's wonderful.
There are some that think that's the smart move. I don't want to be involved in that conversation. And, you know.
Pretty cool, huh?
Yeah. It'd be like Orville when it, you know, spilled out.
I was thinking more, I was thinking more Bellagio.
Well, there were actually skateboarders out there on Saturday, so I called the county and told them there were skateboarders out there.
Yeah, they have a nice ramp.
Yeah. So it's very dangerous right now, and we're just trying to thread the needle and get the water in the ground, you know, while we can.
Dan, while you're here, what's, maybe it already happened, shows you my ignorance. What's the start date on Oasis? I'm trying to give you the benefit of the doubt.
Well, the loop testing is done. NDI is here today, and they are commissioning the south system, which I think is great, and the O1 pump station. So NDI is our SCADA programmer with the new Aviat, with the new Aviva system. And so I think that's great news. I don't know where the west pump station is at this point in time.
I bet Kerry does.
Yes. We're fini, we're finishing up the commissioning this week. We need the 10 customers that are ready to fill out their blue cards and get us their applications so that your accounts can be set up and meters assigned, and we can start delivering water.
So it sounds like another week or two to get all this done?
No, we need the customers to come in and actually do that, but we're ready to deliver water.
For the, for that side. Okay. All right.
Yeah. So.
So do you have any cards in?
No. Not, not, not as of last week.
All right. So I talked to our guys who manage that, and they said, hey, we got a meter number. So I said, well, order water. And so they're not aware that they need to fill out a card.
Well, go ahead.
We have an online application that they can just go online and fill out the application.
Okay, but they still, they don't know that they need to fill out cards.
Okay, so my, I have one of my engineers that has been calling and talking to, but maybe there, he hasn't been talking to the right people.
Yeah.
Okay. But yeah, if you can get the message out.
I'll pass it on to one customer.
Yeah.
Either, so online, we need the application filled out so that the account can be set up.
Okay.
Good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Sounds a little mysterious to me. Yeah. Why don't we move on? Let's see. Are there any board requests for future agenda items? I don't have any. I'm not aware of any future agenda items. Nope. Onto meeting reports. October 31st, we already have a written report filed for the California Farm Water Coalition. Thank you, Director Nelson. November 15th, disadvantaged communities, infrastructure task force, Director Strauss.
That was a general meeting. We went over our regular updates. And I think good news on the Avenue 66 project, which we've all heard about already. But other than that, just a regular meeting.
Good. November 16th, Salt and Sea Authority?
Yes, that was, we had a meeting at the Torres Martinez admin location. It was a combination of our regular meeting and a celebration of the 30th anniversary of the Salt and Sea Authority. I think it went well. We had a number of speakers, previous executive directors there going back. I think we had like at least three of them. So I think we might have had one that was there when maybe you were there. I don't know.
Yeah. Rick Daniels was there?
So Rick Daniels was there.
Phil Rosentrader.
Phil Rosentrader. There was a video that was made for Tom Kirk, also had a video. And so they all kind of went to, through the historical, just events that the Salt and Sea Authority has been involved in. I thought it was, you know, it was good information, a lot of good history. And we had a number of folks show up from, I think, we had folks from maybe some of the other federal agencies. That was, that was kind of a big part of that, obviously the celebration. And then there was, on the agenda, the one thing that popped out was the, we had, you might be aware of this, but we had applied for some Army Corps of Engineering funding for a, for a study that would qualify us for, for a particular pot of money. And that is typically a three-year study. It's a, it's a, they call it a three-by-three. It's a three-year study, $3 million. And I think the Army Corps of Engineers coming back saying, we want to propose that this become more of what they call like a mega study, which, which requires the study, it allows the study to be a lot longer. It looks at more things. And so it's going to become more of an eight-year study. And, but if it all pencils out, it just really opens up the possibility for the federal government to funnel in a bunch of money through the Army Corps of Engineers for projects. So we had a presentation on that.
We should be fortunate that we were picked.
Yeah, that.
That, that was the big thing.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm, I hear that there's only 10 projects in the entire nation that get picked for that. And so I think, I think the Everglades was one project that went through that and had it had big success. So it's a good thing. It's a good thing.
To the public, it sounds like, oh, my God, another study. But the reality is, is that this is, this is wonderful that we actually got picked because.
It's pretty rare.
Yeah, it's very rare.
And so, so that was, that was the big takeaway. Director Nelson, if you want to chime in.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. The, it was interesting hearing from the three of the, I don't know, seven or eight prior executive directors who were there about the progression. People often say, you know, not much has happened with the authority. But if you hear it in sort of historical context, actually, a lot, a lot has happened, starting from, you know, 30 years ago. So it was really good. The only other thing I thought was noteworthy was we had a presentation by GAFCON, who is doing the, the Desert Shores Project. And they announced they'll be doing a bunch of community workshops as they kick that study off. So other than that, that was it.
Great. November 17th, Living Desert Board of Trustees.
Well, that was a end of the year recap. They showed a video of, they have a male and a female rhino over there. And I guess they've had them for probably two years, and I guess it's, they're at the age now, they'd like to have some baby rhinos. So they, they put those two together, which is a big thing. Sometimes they fight, and it doesn't go well. But I guess the, the video showed the male chasing the female for around, for about 10 minutes before he became disinterested, disinterested in her. And that was it. So they'll, they'll keep trying. And then I think Alan Monroe, who's the general manager over there, wants a meeting with CBWD to go over some fees, fee structure. It's coming up.
I was getting nervous. I thought it was going to go the other way, and you were going to have to tell us some X-rated story.
Oh, no, no. Not yet. Maybe next meeting.
Not that kind of video. Okay. And November 27th, Avenue 66 planning meeting?
Yeah, that was a brief meeting with staff in preparation for the celebration of the Avenue 66 funding. We were waiting for the approval of that construction contract, so we did that at the last board meeting. So I think we're, we have a better handle on, on when we can plan for that event. One of the things that we didn't, one of the things that was holding us back was we didn't want to get into a situation where we started planning for the event, and then the bids came out, you know, higher. And then we needed to restrategize on how to, how to fill in the gap. But the bids didn't come in higher, we actually, I think, are going to have to reprogram some of that money. So that's a good thing. Hopefully the state allows us to do that. I think what's going to become of this is not just the Avenue 66 celebration. But you may recall that you received an email from, from Rick that outlined all the financial agreements that we executed just a few months ago. And I think it totals closer to like $63 million for water and sewer projects. And so I think that, that's really what we're going to celebrate is, is our partnership with the state and, and that $63 million that we've received. I imagine that, that we're, we're going to have a big check, a big check presentation from the state water board that shows the $63, $65 million. I think it's a good thing. I saw that Met, I think just yesterday, had a, a similar celebration for some money that they got from Department of Water Resources, and it was, it was like 30 million. So this is, this is, I think, a huge accomplishment. And, and so we, we're going to plan around that. I think there's a, a date that's floating out there already, end of February. It's a Friday to try to accommodate attendance from the state and the feds. And so, so you'll, we'll, we'll hear more as we, as we plan it out. I think that we've agreed that next week, we might go out to visit some sites to look at where we might stage and things like that. So really looking forward to it. You know, this is, this is great. I, I, it's amazing. Thank you.
Then November 27th, a meeting about the Cathedral City Council presentation?
Yeah, that was just a, a meeting with staff and myself to go over the presentation that we're making, well, actually, the Davids are making tomorrow night, this Cathedral City City Council. We're doing a presentation on the status of the projects in North Cathedral City, answer some questions about some of the work that we did initially when the, when the storm hit. And then Jason Alrie from the Riverside County Flood Control is also going to be presenting. So whatever some notes, did some consolidation on the slides, and I think we're good shape.
Good. Good. Other meetings, I had one on November 21st, where I did the online harassment prevention training for supervisors. That's that two-hour course. Apparently it's required by, because of our role here. So I did that. It was the hardest course I think I've ever seen. They give you.
Right, you went to college, right?
They give you, you have to get 80%, and there's only 10 questions. So I guess you can miss two of them, but each question is a compound question. So there's like seven or eight answers for each question. So you miss one of those. So it's really 80%. It's not really 80% at all. I think it's more like you got to score like 98% to get this thing right.
Wow.
So I was like, I only missed one. I got 90%, but I was like, uh-oh, I'm in trouble. Anyways, did that. Any other meetings?
Yeah, I had a, I had a few, if you don't mind. So on the 6th, November 6th, may I have reported this, John? We had a Coachella Valley Irrigated Lands Coalition meeting, discussion of the lack of enforcement by the Regional Water Quality Control Board in terms of getting folks on board with the Irrigated Lands Coalition, as well as membership renewals and, and payments there. And then on the 13th, I had a Aqua panel preparation. So it was to prepare for a panel I'm on on Wednesday at Aqua here in Indian Wells with JB Hamby, Bill Hazencamp, Mina Westford, Tina Shields, and Jay Weiner. So.
What time is that?
That's 1 o'clock, I think.
Wednesday at 1?
Yeah, Wednesday at 1:00. And then, let's see, I'll skip that one. Then on the 18th, after the Seven Basin States Colorado River negotiations, which there were a number of issues that needed to be kind of resolved after that meeting. And so I spent all morning on the phone with PBID and IID and Met, CRB staff with some of those issues. And mostly about Section 5 contractor representation. So that was, that was challenging. And then. Yeah, that was it. Thanks.
Any others?
Yes, I'm spread it. We had a meeting also yesterday with EMD at the county and chief, the chief person at the flood control at the county. And you may recall that I mentioned that the county had reached out, wanting us to, inviting us to participate in a, what they're calling El Nino preparedness, town hall meeting that they're scheduling in the Catholic Church in Necca. I think after the two storm events, specifically the, the second one that caused the damage in the Eastern Coachella Valley, there's the community, not just the community, but I think some of the local agencies have kind of wanted to do a little bit more of awareness, preparedness for what might be El Nino event. And, and so there was some coordination that happened last week to try to figure out what that looked like. We had a meeting yesterday to try to figure out what CBWD's role might be. Dan was there, and so was Chad to provide insight about our role and coordination with the county. So I, I think what we, what we agreed on is that, is that the county through flood control would give a general El Nino presentation that they've been doing around the county and the five districts. It's very general. It's, you know, just general information on how to, how to prepare, information on weather, weather patterns, things like that. And then, and then really like the county through transportation and would talk about road closures and things like that. And CBWD, I think is just there to. And then really like the county through uh transportation and, and, and uh would, would uh talk about road closures and things like that. And CBWD, I think it's just there to. To tell people what our role is, right? It's uh, you know, just, I think it's more of us just saying, hey, look, uh, we know these events happen. Uh, this is what we do. This is who we are. Um, we work on uh cleaning up the, the agricultural ditches. We maintain the ditches. Um, and, and just talk about what we do, right? I think it's just more of us being present, um, letting people know that we know. Uh, that the, that these things happen, that we coordinate with the county, that we coordinate with uh first responders that um. We're part of the agencies that collectively try to respond to these issues. And, and I think that's what I, what I would want to get out of it, uh, an opportunity for us to just be present, be present in front of the community. Um, speak on behalf of ourselves and not uh have others speak for us. And, and uh as to what. We do or our responsibilities might be. And so I think, I think it's more of us just saying, we're here to work together. We do work together. We've been working together. We worked together in the last events. And we're gonna continue to do that. And so I think it's a very simple message of collaboration and, 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 you know, we're, we're part of the community. And so we're there. And that's it. I, I don't think it's more than that. And so the, I think some staff plans to be there and uh, I think it's good.
Great, thanks. Is there a motion approved per diem for the meetings reported on?
Take a motion?
All second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass by though. General Manager.
Also, the only thing I've got, uh Director Agar's already kind of referenced that. There's a presentation that the staff will be giving uh to Cathedral City City Council uh tomorrow evening. Around seventeen thirty, or five thirty, sorry. Um, and I'll be there as well as will Scott Barrett. Um, Aqua is uh in town as Director Nelson is also spoken to. Uh, and you've mentioned the.
Special uh this evening. Uh, I'll be attending uh out and off today and then all day Wednesday and part of Fri- part of Thursday. That's, that's pretty much it. That's all I got.
I was thinking of sneaking in for your panel, but that's exactly the same time as the Golf and Water Task Force at, in Palm Desert. And I'm not registered for Aqua, so I'm not sure what I'm doing.
I'll give you my card.
Yeah, I bet, I bet I could sneak in. By, by Wednesday afternoon, no one's looking, right?
Yeah, they used to check meal tickets and that's about it. But this time they say there's no meal tickets required. So there's not a lot of security guys walking around, except the. The exhibit, the, the exhibit hall sometimes has someone standing outside.
That's at the Esmeralda. Probably in the back, the conference room in the back. All right, well, we'll see. Uh, Council?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to update the board on the uh, during the COVID pandemic, uh, the State Board uh had and. A program to help fund uh those customers who were not able to pay their bills during the pandemic. Uh, that covered the period of March fourth, twenty twenty through June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. The State Board has re- has recently uh issued a notice that they will extend that program to cover periods of March four, twenty twenty through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. As with the uh, uh, the program that was in effect previously, um, the water purveyors can apply to the State Board for funding to cover delinquent accounts. Whether they're current customers or customers who have since left the service area, but had an unpaid account. And so the money is applied for and used by the water purveyors to cover unpaid accounts during those time periods. It's not a direct payment to customers. So. Uh, that is available now. The second round of funding was made available through the ARPA federal funds that came through to the state. And they estimate about six hundred million dollars will be available to cover that. The time period for water purveyors to apply begins this month. And they anticipate being able to, to have that money dispersed uh within a sixty-day period. So that's all I have to answer.
Thank you. Any departmental reports? Oh, Robert. Come on up.
Like just to close the loop on uh, you know, the pre- previous question about white water. Uh, so deliveries through the end of October, I think as Dan alluded to, I think Met's reports usually run. You know, about a month behind. Uh, so through the end of October, they've delivered like about hundred and seventy-four thousand acre feet. Of water to white water. So their uh balance as they, uh, in the account is two hundred and sixty-seven thousand acre feet. So. You know, not record numbers, but compared to, you know, what we were in the last two or three years with five percent allocation, that's still really good.
When you say balance in the account, what, what did you mean by that?
The advanced delivery account. That Met keeps a ledger on.
Are they, so, I mean, how much are they gonna add to their advanced delivery this year?
Um, I think they're gonna do that at the end of the year. Uh, you know, under accounting, uh, you know, try to do the puts and takes. So. The physical amount of water in that account right now is two hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
Right. Yeah, so, but if you take the. The other pieces of water, so you have like a hundred and ninety-four thousand between desert and, for Table A, right?
For Table A.
And then you have the State Water Project transfer from the QSA and, and then, which is like, what is that, twenty-five or thirty or?
Uh, well, there's the thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
Or the thirty-five thousand exchange agreement.
Which is less than thirty-five, cause it's.
Right.
Thirty?
Well.
We gave up something on that.
No, it was actually the twenty thousand.
Yeah, we gave up on the twenty, so we could get it at whitewater.
Oh, right, right, right.
Right, right. But the thirty-five thousand is.
So one ninety-four plus thirty-five plus fifteen?
Uh, yeah, plus fifteen.
Plus Rosedale?
Right, uh, plus Rosedale, which is ninety-five hundred.
So you add all that up and that's gonna get pretty close to what went in for the year, for the calendar year.
Right.
So the difference in the advanced delivery would be. Maybe on top of that, right? But it's not gonna be very much.
Um, yeah, I have to think about that a little bit, you know, because it's.
Eight hundred acre feet a day.
Yeah, Me- Mesa County is always a little bit um, you know, not as transparent on the front end.
Yeah, I get it. It won't be much.
So, so Robert, uh, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
With, with the lack of transparency there, are there times where Met would get water in before these four pots of our water would get in? In other words, we have about a two hundred and twenty-five, five thousand acre feet to put in? Would, would their water get in first in some instances?
Um, I think the way that, that, you know, in terms of taking water, you know, from the State Water Project System, uh, they always deliver, deliver their water first. Uh, into their system, right? And then they'll take, you know, our water and put it into their system. And then, so, you know, it's decoupled. So the delivery into the account comes from the Colorado Riverside. So um, I, I know it's, I'm probably not explaining it as clearly, but.
No, no, I get it. So for example, they take our water. So they're, they're taking their own water in their own system in the greater LA area.
Correct.
And then our water comes last. So, so in the Colorado, uh, would they try and match that up on a?
No. There, there, there's no si- uh sinking of that. I think that there are actually two separate operations.
Okay, okay.
I, I think that's what makes it a little difficult to understand because you would think, you know, we always talk about bucket for bucket, but I think there's a timing sequence too.
Yeah, but to John's point, our water would come in first then into Coachella uh through the, through the whitewater spreading basin.
Co- correct.
Yeah.
And, and so you said one seventy-four through Oc- end of October?
A hundred and seventy-four thousand through the end of October.
So figure another fifty at best, if you're at eight hundred a day. So that gets you to two twenty-four through to the end of December, right, roughly? But if you take a hundred percent of Table A is one ninety-four.
Right.
Thirty-five on top of that, and then fifteen on top of that, that's two forty-four. So that's twenty more than what they're able to deliver.
So just to help Robert with the, with the list here.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering how, what happens if they don't deliver it all? I don't, I don't think they will.
So we're, we just passed two oh six today, okay? So we've got what, three, three more days. So we're gonna get another twenty-four hundred. So that's two oh eight. Then we get another twenty-four thousand. So we're at two thirty-three or so by the end of the year. They started the year. On their advanced delivery account, they started at two hundred and eighty-one thousand. Right now, they're two sixty-seven. So they're fourteen thousand less than they were in January of this year. Of their water in our basin.
Right, yeah, cause the difference between the, the, the two thirty-three and the two, let's say fifty, I don't know how much Rosedale is.
Two, it's two fifty-three and a, uh, two hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred.
If you put it all together.
If you put it all together.
So they're gonna be short twenty. So that just comes out of the advanced delivery account.
Or they start somewhere else.
Yeah, because we wanna get, we wanna get all of ours. Right? I'm just, yeah, I'm just saying, cause we haven't really had this problem.
And what, and, and, and so, and, and so what about the Article twenty-one? Wouldn't that add to the two fifty-three?
Uh, at a hundred percent year, I think, you know, Met's physically don't, you know, doesn't have room uh for the Article twenty-one water. In fact, I think, you know, I, you know, I, um.
I've heard Adele say that Met will lose four hundred thousand acre feet for lack of delivery.
So, so one of the, one of the pluses for the mismanagement of DWR on San Luis Reservoir is there's an ability for. For Met to carry over that water into twenty twenty-four as carryover water.
Right.
So uh, they may be carrying over uh some of their water and our water.
No, that's correct. So I think uh, General Manager is exactly right. Um, you know, I don't know how much of a secret this is, uh, you know. So Met has some physical uh capacity issues, you know, inside their system in terms of. You know, because frankly, you know, three, five percent years in a row, they've really rationed it back. I think the man has not rebounded. I think. Uh, not to, you know, put words in Met staff's mouth, but I hear like this year is really, really low water sales. It's like one point four to one point five million acre feet. Whereas back in the day when the General Manager was on Met's board, I think they were projecting one point eight to like two million acre feet sales. So it's way down. So uh, without, you know, the ability to bring water into their system, they can't exchange our water either. Uh, so that's, you know, is, you know, sort of like the. Situation we find ourselves, not just us, but desert water. So um, you know, part of that, you know, will be retained. I don't think it's lost per se. Uh, it's just undelivered. Uh, so, you know, that water stays up in the system and we've been working with Met staff on uh. How to best ma- uh message that, because I don't think any staff, you know, really wants to come in front of the boards and say, hey, you know what? We're not able to take delivery of a hundred percent of water in a year like this. Uh, this is a very strange year. We started off the year, you know, kind of dry. And it wasn't until like, I don't know, like March or April, you know, when we got to a hundred percent. So we lost out on that opportunity too, which we've also verbalized to uh DWR. About the need for, you know, um. Yeah, exactly. More timely forecast.
Then you had the problems with the hurricane.
That's right, exactly. The delivery system, so.
Constrained the deliveries.
Yeah, so all, all around, you know, it's just, um, you know, I, I'd love to be able to say the math works out, but uh, in this case.
Sounds like, yeah, I mean, we're about twenty thousand acre feet short of full delivery.
Right, which is not bad compared to some of the other, you know, uh, especially for us on the, you know, far end of the system.
So what you're saying is you're gonna be looking at how that might be accounted for and, and stored somewhere north?
I, I think it's stored and then it translates to a hot, you know, hopefully a higher Table A allocation. Uh, when that number, you know, when the figures, you know, come out. And I think they're supposed to, DWR is supposed to give us the numbers before December first. So by this Friday.
Yeah, I'm just wondering i- i- if, if there's a shortage of delivery, and I guess we're not getting into whose fault it is or anything. But if there's a shortage of delivery, why wouldn't they just take it out of the Table A, uh, out of the advanced delivery account?
I suppose that, that, that is an option.
Just to count for it that way.
Yeah. I mean, I think there is a desire to kind of.
Cause I'm assuming like if they couldn't, if they couldn't put water through whitewater because of the hurricane.
Right.
Then that water flowed to them.
Right.
So why not, why not just count it as advanced delivery water?
I, I think part of the, and we don't need to, you know, uh, I mean, happy to, you know, have additional conversations uh as needed, but. I think part of the accounting too is the thirty-five thousand acre feet, uh, because if you all remember, uh, this board gave authorization. Uh, for Metropolitan to not deliver it year by year, but by the end of the twenty twenty-six.
Later, yeah.
So uh, they've, they haven't uh delivered on that yet. Uh, the fifteen thousand out of the twenty thousand approval agreement water. They've been very diligent about making sure that account, the balance is, is up. But, but we paid them for that. But you're absolutely right, President Powell, that uh, you know, there, there is a day reckoning, you know, that's coming. Uh, so, you know, they could very well take all of that out of the advanced delivery account. So that's why, you know, I'm not trying to.
No, I know. And I'm just, you know, we're kind of just noodling over it because it's an unusual situation.
Very strange.
It's kind of the opposite of what we've been dealing with.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. So anyway, sorry to make, make the issue not as clear as it could be, but.
No, I think it's all right. Yeah, thank you. Good. Well, that uh, brings us to the, yeah, Scott Barrett?
Yeah, just one.
By the way, I wanted to, I have a question for you after offline, after this, before the closed session.
Sorry, I just wanted to follow up on General Counsel Faray's comment about the ARPA funding, the Arriage funding. I know there was board interest last time in us participating. And so we will be participating in that funding again this time. There's about. Six hundred and seventy-eight delinquent accounts that owe about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So we'll be pursuing that funding through that program. Just so you had the information.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay.
Good. Well, at this time, the board reassessed a closed session to consider the items on the agenda. We will reconvene uh after that to report out. Good. Well, the reg- regular meeting is hereby reconvened. We do not have any reportable action from closed session and with no further business, we are adjourned.